Let's have a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all. Amen. I think I got a little bit messed up there.
You're all right.
The minutes, does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes over?
Real quick, some additions and deletions of agenda items. We've got, there was a letter that you all received from Tom Collard to the board regarding the available positions on the Rutland Regional Community Commission and the Regional Transportation Council. There's also a letter from Frank, which I don't know if Frank wants to be an appearance by local citizens and visitors or where that wants to come in, but Frank reached out to you all as well. Bob Morleano is here to give an update from the health officer. Not sure if you want to discuss that during his report or appearances and visitors. And I received an updated contact from the folks at the Elon City, which is where the solar panel speed signs come from. So that's a lot. Most of it is new business or within the reports, but that's all come up.
Okay. Did anybody see anything in the minutes?
They looked pretty good, I thought.
Somebody want to make the motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Ed? Ed made the motion to approve the minutes. Does somebody want to second it?
John will second it.
Okay, John will second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Ed?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Next order of business?
Pre-re-.
I don't have my cheat sheet with me tonight, Kristen.
I got you, pre-requested, so again, not sure. Frank had contacted me about wanting to be on the agenda, so I'm not sure if he's on the call. And I also don't know if Bob wanted to go during pre-requested or during the health officer.
Bob, when do you want to go?
The sooner the better. It won't take very long.
Okay, so if there's no problem, we'll let Bob go next.
I just wanted to warn you that I'm probably going to be writing a health order for a situation we have. We have a demolition of a building going on on Route 149. And that building is supposed to have an asbestos inspection. The lady who owns the building said she didn't have the money for the asbestos inspection. There's nothing I can do about that, but she still has to have that inspection done before she demolishes the building. I spoke to her last week. She said she halted demolition, but I went by today and obviously she has not. The demolition is continuing. I talked to the state. I've been working with the state. The asbestos lead engineer for the Department of Health, his name is Chris Kinich. And we came to the conclusion that probably the next thing to do is to write a health order. So today is Tuesday, Thursday, probably Thursday. I'm out of town today and tomorrow. I'm up in Colchester right now. I will send, if you remember, the routine is I have to send a notice of intent to this lady. And then she has the opportunity to come to the select board. Or actually, what she does is come to the health board and explains her side of the story. This particular instance, I don't think she'll even show up. And then we have to file a health order to have her stop the demolition until she gets an asbestos asbestos inspection. But I just wanted to warn you that the next, and what I'll do is I'll hold it off until the next, the actual health order, until the next select board meeting. So I just wanted to warn you that in two weeks, we may have to have a Board of Health meeting after the select board meeting to handle this.
Okay, this house is on Route 149?
That's correct. There's two houses. This lady owns two houses there. They're multiple family dwellings, one right next to the other. They're right on the state line. The lady who owns them lives over in Hampton, New York. There's been some issues with the buildings. They don't meet the rental housing code. She was, she had been, she's already been given, I think it was about three years ago, a ruling by a court, state court, saying that she needs to comply with the rental housing code. The state went and did that. She hadn't done that either. She, a year and a half ago, made all the tenants leave the building. So there's no tenants in the building. And she can't rent any of the buildings. Her intention is to knock one building down and then refurbish the other one and rent it out. She can't rent that other building or either building out, but one of them's half demolished now anyway. She can't rent those buildings out until she meets the rental housing code. That's explicitly stated in the court order that she has. What she's doing is she's having the house demolished by someone who she's going to rent an apartment to in the other house. I've been keeping an eye on it to see if she's already rented that apartment. I have no indication that she has, but I'll have to keep an eye on that.
Okay. If you had any contact.
This is Frank, could I?
Go ahead, Frank.
Since Bob's on, we ran into a problem with a building that burned in Granville without the lead and asbestos inspection having been done. But the contractors that refurbished the buildings stated there was nothing in there, but they didn't have a certificate. So after the fire, the state of New York mandated that all the debris had to be removed by specially licensed contractors, hauled by specially licensed waste haulers to a specially licensed facility, even though they're, because the state was guessing that it was there in the absence of a certificate, which Bob was referring to.
Okay, so that's, that's what we have to do. We have to make sure that that lady has.
I'm wondering if Bob, right, but conversely, I'm wondering if Bob would recommend that the town hire these.
Okay, that's not pertinent to this discussion right now, Frank. Frank, we need to stay focused on this discussion. That's new business. Okay, the other discussion, Bob, is that are you aware of any demolition permits in West Polat Village?
Yeah, I know that Cindy Legg is demolishing a building. I spoke to her. She did get her asbestos inspection done. I just have to follow up with her because she's supposed to, I have to get her to send a demolition permit to the state. These are all state regulations. They're not Town of Polat regulations.
Okay. I just noticed that that building was being demolished and I wanted to know if the permits were in place.
Yeah, that one there, she has to, she just has to file a permit with the state. But that's, the important thing is she did the asbestos. She did do the asbestos check and she didn't have any and she's good to go.
Okay.
I have one other thing. Chuck, I understand you stopped up at my house today.
Yes, I did. Had a nice conversation with your wife.
Yeah, that's what she told me. And I think she, she's been hanging around me the last 36 years or so. She learned something about the health officer role. And what she told you was correct. And that is that I understand there's a house on Dambie Park Road with a lot of junk around the yard and a lot of refuse and so on. There's nothing we can do about it. There's no state regulation that says that you can't live the way you want to live and have junk all around. Towns have ordinances against that. We do not, as you all know, we do not have an ordinance against that. The only time the health officer gets involved, if there's straps out there and they are attracting rodents, rats, then the health officer can get involved and make them remove, actually only get them to remove those things that are retracting the rats. The rest of the junk, they can have cars there, they can have whatever, washing machines, mattresses out front. All of that can be there. We have no authority to get them to remove that junk. The only authority that the state has is, again, the health officer has the authority, the state has the authority, then to have someone remove food waste that's attracting rodents. Regarding unregistered vehicles, you can have up to three unregistered vehicles. After that, you fall under a salvage yard and there's a whole host of regulations that cover salvage yards. So of course you have to be zoned to be in a salvage yard. So if somebody has three, more than three unregistered motor vehicles, that's a violation of the state regulations and they have to remove some of the vehicles. I don't know if that Chuck house, Chuck has unregistered motor vehicles on the property, but.
No, it's just rubbish and I don't think, but there's a lot of it. It would definitely fill that roll off that we just said. And plus some extra.
I was fortunate, we were fortunate as a town, you know, I got after a bank on the Ronnie Waithouse on 133. There was a lot of garbage out there. And I got them to remove, there were some plastic bags with food waste. And I got them, I was able to push them to do that. And they came and actually they moved some of the other junk that was hanging, that was out there. They filled two or three containers with other junk that was out there, which frankly, I have no authority to have them remove. I can only have them remove materials that are attracting rats. And there has to be some evidence of rats as well. I can't just say, well, there's rats here. I have to have some kind of evidence. But we were fortunate in that case, they removed most of the garbage from the house, the outside of the house.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Yep.
You want to do any other reports that you have right now, Bob, and then you can be excused?
I don't, we don't have any, we reviewed them, the monthly reports at the last.
Yeah, the first Tuesday of the month, I send my reports. And so I have nothing to add, other than just to let you know, we may end up having a next meeting.
I have a question for Bob.
Go ahead, John.
On the warrants, there's a health officer expense. Is that, is that an hourly filing or?
Is it what, John?
It's, it says, health officer expense is $660.
Yeah, what it is, is 500 is the $500 annual stipend that the town gives the health officer. That's 500. The rest of it, 100 and change, is purchases I made of PPE for the town, for the town hall.
Okay.
Hand sanitizer and a mask, 500 masks and sanitizer, surface sanitizer. I was able to purchase those. Deb had trouble getting them. I found a way to get them through the United Way and I purchased them on my card and submitted an expense for the, I think it's 100 and something. I don't remember. And the 500 dollars is the annual stipend that the town gives to the health officer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, next.
Frank?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, I had my question resolved that I wanted to bring up. Otherwise, I'm in the general of public participation.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is announcements. I have none, other than there seems to have been some suspicious email activity going around. So just be mindful of any emails that you get today. And I guess over the last couple of days, which we can look more into. But just, that's all for now. Just an announcement about be mindful of your email.
Okay, what else?
And then we go into reports. First up, we have the zoning administrators' report. And Jonas submitted a report to the board. He approved two new subdivision applications last week. One for a lot line adjustment and the other for a single lot subdivision. Neither is creating a new parcel for development. Also, I am supposed to provide the planning commission with other town zoning ordinances and with conditional use language for the polit table of uses to review and consider. I can do that this week. I will look at the sign issue on Wednesday. I have a DRB meeting in Castleton tonight at 7:00 PM. Thanks, Jonas. So I had asked him as well about the parking zoning that we had a question on outside of the market. And I haven't heard anything back from that. And then you all, also what was on the agenda was the Better Places Grant or the Better Places Proposal, rather. I had emailed that to all of you. It's some grant funding opportunity for downtown villages. So that's something, if everybody wants to have a chance to take a look at. I am planning on looking more into it as well. And proposing any potential ideas or projects I might have at the next meeting. But I just wanted to put that on your radar as well. And that's all for the zoning administrators' side of things.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Harry?
No.
Okay.
Now to Jonas's. I've got a, John has a question about now that we aren't wandering through the town hall like we did on occasion. How do we know, does the website show the parcels or permits given, zoning permits given? I haven't tried that.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I haven't checked it either, but I have spoken to Jonas about what we can do to get it on the website. And I don't think he's done anything further yet. I don't know where he stands on Franklin. Okay, maybe I'll contact sometime. Yeah, we are trying to work with him on getting, working on zoning application forms that can be filled out online using a fill-in PDF type of form. We're not, we're not, we're not there yet. No, he's still working on it.
So next up would be the planning commission's report.
We had our last meeting at the end of May, so I don't have anything further on that meeting. But I just wanted to say that we, our next meeting on the 22nd. It's again going to be a virtual meeting, as you probably would suspect anyway. And there is now a link on our, on the planning commission webpage, which takes you to the meeting and takes you to the agenda. All the information is there. Hey Frank, can you mute your sound? I'm getting an echo.
All right. Got you.
Okay, thanks. I did attend an open meeting webinar with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns last week, which was a special webinar they did for COVID-19. Did anybody see that, notice that they sent around or, and did anybody attend?
I couldn't make it.
Okay. I thought it was, thought it was well presented. Susan Sending was the presenter. She's the attorney. She's an attorney at the VLCT Municipal Assistance Center. And I called her and told her I thought it was a good seminar. But I also wanted to ask her about the last meeting we had that did not get properly warned. Unbeknownst to us, the notice did not go out in time. So the public was, did not get the link. But I told her what we had discussed at the meeting. And one was elections, where she said that since the public has no input into the election process anyway for the commission, that whatever we, whatever we had decided at the meeting is, would be considered organizational. And so at that, at that last meeting, the result of the elections was I was reelected as chairman. Tom Collard was elected as vice chairman. And Rick Sasser was reelected as the secretary. So that concludes my report. So that's what's been going on.
Anybody have any questions for Harry? Okay, if not, we'll move right along.
All right, next up is the road foreman's report. I was sent an update from Keith. I know Keith, you're here. But if you'd like, I can read through that quickly and then can elaborate?
Yeah, we'll go over it.
Okay.
Item by item, probably, anyway, Kristen, but if you want to read it, that's fine.
You can go ahead. Sign with me.
All right, well, first up, we got a problem with our 410 Baco. It's got to go to North Tracks to be repaired. We're pushing oil from brake compartment into the transaxle in the rear end. There's a, needs to have a rear end split and seals put in somewhere in there. So I guess I talked with Bob today. I guess they're going to get it trucked over for us. And it's anticipated at $5,055,000. So that's the first bad news of the evening, I guess, so.
How many hours on that, Keith?
26, 26 something, Mike, 12700.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's, well, it's, yeah, it's five years old, but it's, that's what it has for hours, so.
Right.
And yeah, and it's, I guess it's something that's cropping up. They just said they just did the Town of Springfield's. So that's what he gave me as a reference for cost and assuming it's going to be similar. So, so same symptoms and everything else, so. But it has to go over there because it has to be split and all of that. It's nothing they can do on a road car, so. So Bob Jones is going to take care of getting it over there for us. He lets whoever you want to call it, but it'll go over there and he thinks he can get it in, start on it Thursday and doesn't think it'll be too long to get it turned around and back to us, so. Second thing I wanted to talk about was the crossing patch over at Jay and Dolores's. I got laid out and ready to do that and was a little shocked at what I found out when I actually put a string on things and found out that that rut that goes around from Charlie PQ's to Allison Acres driveway is going to take 19 inches of material to fill back up. So that's a, it's a lot of tonnage and too much to do with just blacktop. So I had Tommy Fuller come down and look at it and see about grinding that stretch right up and putting, leveling it up, shimmying everything prior to putting blacktop down and then do it. And if we, it's going to take 100 ton of blacktop at $70 a ton to even shim it and get it back reasonable. So you're looking at $7,000 for Tommy's, looking at $9,000. I sent it in the email to Kristen and I think she forwarded to you guys his quote there. But he will grind it and reshape everything there, starting at Charlie PQ's and going to Allison Acres driveway on both sides of the road and level everything back up and put four inches of new blacktop on the entire stretch for $9,000. So that's a, it's more, I know, than what we had anticipated. But I, until I pulled my string down through there, I had no idea just how big that rut was. And what that rut is, is your sewer line through there. So it's been crushed down for, you know, years and years. And it's been paved over a couple of times and never shaped back up. And that's why that big whoop is in the road there. And it really, that's the proper way to do it and have it straightened out. So I need some feedback on you guys on that issue before we can go ahead with it, so.
It seems like it's the most effective way to correct the issue.
It really is. I mean, I, when, like I said, I knew it was going to be a fill over that swale there just because you dive down into it from each side and that right-hand rut that's there. You know, that's the reason we put some shoulder on the road there to try to stabilize it and stop that whole road from shifting right down in the inside of that turn right there. But when I got over there and ran a string on it, that's what it is. That rut is 19 inches deep and that's where all your tonnage is going to go. And you know, you can't, it doesn't make sense to fill 19 inches with blacktop. It's just, it's impractical to do that, so.
So the other option would be to dig?
Other option would be to dig it all out, replace it, compact it. And you know, you'd still be right back to putting your four inches of blacktop on top of it. And, but if he grinds it, what we're doing is making use of the existing material that's there and we're not digging it back out and hauling it away and bringing other material back in to replace it with. What he'll grind, what's right there, it looks to me like we'll even lower the center of the road where it's crowned up so steep and come right around there. And that will make the fill that will shift down into where the rut is. And I don't think we'll have to add a lot of material to come up to the grade we're looking for. It's also going to get rid of that other dive that's in the road where we have problems in the winter because it puddles there in front of Charlie PQ's where we, remember where we had the issue of pushing snow up onto the porch and through the window there where you dive down into that dip right there. So that's where we'll start with the reclaim. It's, that's the correct way to do it, for sure, is to have Tommy come. Because he's got, we'll have traffic control, we'll come with the roller, we'll use our grader and we'll put our liquid chloride on it and, you know, seal it all down and have, put the shake back into the road there so that when we do cover it with a fresh coat of blacktop, it'll be ready. Otherwise, we're just kicking the can down the road and we'll be right back where we are now in a few years, so. It's the best way to do it, even though it's twice as much as I originally told you, I think, that it would take to shim that, but.
What does anybody else think about this project?
Well, I didn't hear him mention anything about the lady that sent us the letter. What's going on with her, Keith?
I think Bob has got that worked out with her.
This is Bob. Yeah, I met with Allison.
This is Bob. Yeah, I met with Allison. Look, you know, we discussed what she'd like it to look like there. I talked to Keith about the project that he just discussed with everyone there and he can incorporate it as part of, of the finish there. He can add some, some topsoil over top of that slate rubbish so that she will be able to refeed that, that bank and, and plant her flowers there and I think she'll be content.
Okay, that sounds good. What do you think about this, about milling the blacktop or, or not?
Well, this is Bob. I, I agree. It's gotta be done right. You can't, the way Keith is describing it there, you would potentially have at least 16, even with a crown, even a decent crown to the road, you'd have 16 to 20 inches of blacktop on one side and, and you'd only be adding a few inches in the middle. And that's not gonna hold up. It's just gonna roll and, and crack away and, and we'll have to repave it again in a few years. So it does, I believe it does need to be ground and relaid and, and a nice even coat down through there.
Okay.
So what is the total estimate? This is Chuck. What is the total estimate of that job?
$9,000.
That's, that's the high number, right?
That's the quote he gave me. That's finished, finished product there for $9,000. And that's with us using our grader to grade what he grinds and we'll put chloride on it. And he'll, he'll have the rollers and the grinder and we'll reshape it and roll it in and compact it and chloride it and put, you know, once you get it back to dirt, you can't go with a thin shim, you know. I think you'll go with a, you know, a two-and-a-half inch shim and an inch-and-a-half overlay on top of it, so. But it should take care of that situation for a long, long time as opposed to putting a bunch of blacktop there and have it all crush off the edge and break down in towards the inside of that turn again, so.
And then after you get through that section, the rest of the road is all decent?
Rest of the road is all decent, yes.
Okay. Does anybody want to?
Wow. I, I understand there's some issue with our Dodge dump again. That's starting to turn into a money pit. When is that on the schedule to be gone and we get a new one?
Anytime you guys are ready to write the check. I mean, we've discussed that for a few years now.
Well, this is Ed, All-Star. With the deals they're giving right now on trucks, I'd be looking.
Would you like me to get something quoted for next meeting?
I wouldn't have a problem, but I know about the rest of the board. This is Ed.
If you're gonna get quotes, you need to get them from the big three.
Yeah.
Actually, four, I guess you can say. That would be Ford, Dodge, International, Chevrolet.
Yeah, I can do that.
Something in a, you're gonna stay with a 5,500 size?
I think that makes the most sense.
Well, we need to know going in what it's, what it's gonna cost. And I don't, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but I don't want a plow like what we've had on that Dodge. My mind is that's way too heavy for the front end of that. But if you get a hold of a V-style plow, that might not be a bad option. But you can get your plow option and sander if you want from Ford and.
Uh, where in Ford and? The Ford garage?
No, 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 no. Uh, actually, it, uh, oh, uh, it's between Hartford and Ford and on, on the crossroad.
Okay, I know where you mean.
Okay, so now we've, we've jumped the subject from this plowing, from the paving job. We need to know if we want to spend the $9,000 to get the road fixed. That's, that's something we need to decide on right now. Does anybody have a different option or questions about a different option or something they'd like to do different to, for that road job? Or do we want to give them permission to go ahead and have Fuller's do the road job?
This is John. Do we need a second bid or third bid or this, or is this a emergency repair?
Good question, John. I, I don't know that we need a second bid, but I can get one if you'd like.
Who else has a capacity to do that?
Well.
Everybody have a milling now, Keith?
Oh, pretty much, I think. Pike does, I'm sure. Wilt, I don't know. Wilt may contract with Pike to do it or something. I don't, I don't know for sure. Um, but, yeah, I would.
I guess we'd be doing, we'd be doing our due diligence if we had more than one quote for that project.
All right, I will get another quote.
Okay, thank you. And what else you got on your list?
Can I speak to Keith again?
Sure.
Don't, I, I don't expect you would, but it doesn't need to be known what the number is. We don't need any big collusion.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know.
Thank you.
Um, next thing is we have, have a driveway permit that needs to be signed. Maybe you guys can authorize Bob to sign it when he does the checks. It's for Dave Barden on the North Pollock Road. It's fairly straightforward and doesn't, other than the standard culvert and whatnot, it's, it's pretty standard. So I'd like to get that back to him so he can start if he gets a contractor lined up.
I didn't hear the name on that, Keith, I'm sure.
Uh, Dave Barden, Dave and Dale.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right on the North Pollock Road. They're putting a different access, just shifted towards Wells from their current driveway. It'll be, and, you know, stipulations are on there. He has to, can't introduce water to us. He's gotta put an 18-inch culvert in the ditch and some things like that. But it should have at least one select board member's signature on it, so.
Okay. Can Bob sign that when he signs the warrants?
Actually, there is a, the permit itself is at the town hall currently. I would believe probably in my mailbox. I haven't been in the town hall in, I don't know how long, but Deb, I sent it to Deb and she printed it out for me, so it would be there for somebody to sign. So it's prob, it's in there somewhere and I can find out if it's not available. If you guys just give Bob authorization to sign that, it'd be good.
Does anybody have any problems with Bob signing that?
I'll make a motion that authorize Bob to sign that.
Okay, that sounds good, John.
Is the, sorry, this is Kristen. John, is the motion also to approve the driveway permit?
Is for Bob. Authorize Bob to approve the driveway permit.
Thank you.
Or for Dave Barden.
This is Ed. I'll second that.
Okay, Ed. Any more discussion? All in favor? To Ed?
Aye.
In favor?
Yes.
Chuck? Chuck, you in favor?
Um, well, I have a family member that owns property next to Dave and Dale. I'm wondering what culvert size his is, if that continues to run from Barden's down to the Sergeant property. Did you happen to notice? What's that?
It's going the other way, Chuck.
It is going the other way?
Yeah, it's towards Wells, going the other way from, from the current one. Doesn't, so.
All right, good. I'm in favor.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. You can sign that curb cut for Dave Barden. What else you got on your agenda, Keith?
I think that's about it. The other stuff is ongoing. Of course, it's contingent on a Baco at this point. But we, we did go truck for Rupert today. And I don't think there's a lot more of that going on, but they want to do some rock when the time comes, so they may cooperate and work with us a little bit, at least trucking when we get some, ready to put some top on our road. Our agreement with the quarries may not be as good as we originally thought because it's kind of a logistics nightmare to get them to cooperate and get things coming all at once. And they don't want to draw out each other's quarries and they don't want to coordinate anything. They just want to bring rock and dump it. So we're gonna see what happens, but we may have to readjust that a little bit just because it may not, may not work, you know. So, so we'll see. But that's open-ended at this time and I will, I spoke with Lee and then he had to change the teeth and do some stuff to his Baco over there, but I see when I was over there today, he's got it done. So I'll take care of that issue at Beaver Culvert there at the Pafundi Quarry.
Okay.
The same as we discussed. She actually was up there, drove by today. I don't think she knew who I was or she would have stopped and asked, but she was checking on it and I thought maybe she was wondering if it was gonna happen soon, so.
Unfortunately, I hadn't communicated or whether I sent you talk, but I will before the week's over.
Okay, yeah.
This is Frank with a question for Keith.
Go ahead, Frank.
Typically, I think, dealing with environmental regulations, being part of an environmental organization for years, I think there's a discharge permit the state has to do if the quarry starts to kick water out of there. And I was wondering if we're supposed to be paying for this downstream effect from the quarry discharge? Or is the quarry supposed to be doing it as a condition of a state permit?
Well, I don't believe there's any state permit involved over there. You know, that's a long pre-existing quarry and I'm sure it flies under the Act 250. I'm not gonna be the resident expert on the environmental factors, but the water is continuing to go where it has always gone. The problem is, is that it is more volume of water because of the pumping situation. So I think it's probably the easiest remedy that Mike has worked out with the landowner and we've got a plan there and it's pretty harmless to all of us and we hope it works. So if we need to get more involved in that, we'll be sure to include you in the discussion.
The, my understanding was is that if anybody's discharging any waters into quote-unquote "the waters of the state", it's in the state and the, in regards to that discharge, and they may need a permit.
Well, they may.
At the Act 250, outside of the Act 250. Because this is an Act 250.
Yeah, I know, and that, they may very well, but the, I mean, the bottom line is, is I think what we're trying to do is come up with a solution that's acceptable to maintain the integrity of the town road over there and, and not have too much a negative impact on our butter there. So, you know, that is really our concern and I don't think we need to go any further than that.
Exactly. Yeah, we, we have to, regardless of whether they were pumping or not, there's some water that we have to control where it comes out of the culvert that's there. And that's what this, this little ditch work will do and, and we'll be in good shape, I feel, too, Keith.
If we, if we had done nothing there, Mike, that still would be a larger volume of water than what had been there and, you know.
Absolutely.
Those are, we gotta deal with the things that are in our control and that's where we're at right now. And we don't need to get involved in the things that are beyond our control. Much of my opinion.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else for Keith?
Okay, Chuck, I may reach out and be in touch with you until we're on, on stage. We don't need to discuss it at the meeting here, probably. We'll get something worked out. Try to get together what you want for the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I am, I'm back to work three days a week, Keith.
Okay.
So the only two days that I'm, well, there's only one day that you're working and I'm available. Uh, the other Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays, I'd be available Friday, but you're not, so, so whatever works.
All right. We'll, we'll hook up one way or another. Even if we just have a conversation on the phone, maybe, just, just still want to put some time and effort into something and then not have what you're looking for, that's all, so. Okay?
Keith, this is Ed, Chuck.
Yeah.
Just had a thought. I believe that Carmody Ford has one salesman just works specifically with municipalities, but I'm not positive on that.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I'll reach out to a few and try to get something, something confirmed here. But, yeah, I'm sure most of them have a municipal program. It's usually somewhere is in line with what they call their fleet network or something, somebody that owns more than one vehicle. So it's, we'll, yeah, we'll get it figured out one way or another. And, you know, I just, if we're gonna have it in two weeks and it's gonna take a week to get here, we probably need to at least start making contacts here this week, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Keith? Okay, move on to the next.
All right.
Thank you, Keith.
Thanks, guys.
This is Kristen. Next up is the assessors report. While there was no formal report submitted, I had sent you all, I think it was last week, Karen had emailed and I forwarded along to you the contract for the CAI 2020 Maintenance Invoice Contract from Lisa Wright, GIS. So that's your, for the time period of September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. And it requires the signatures of the select board, so.
Okay. John, did you? I, I mean, it's, it's something that we always, we have done right along and I don't think there was any changes in the price, was there?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It's, uh, $2,400, which is, if my memory serves, I think that sounds like what it was last year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We can make a motion to approve that GIS service. Somebody want to make a motion?
John will make the motion to accept the CAI contract.
Do I hear a second?
Just add, I'll second it.
Ed seconded it. All in favor? Ed?
Aye, yes.
Chuck?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Um, so I believe that the whole, in previous years, the entire board signs that. I noticed that in Deb's memo, which is coming up, there is another item that the entirety of the select board needs to sign. Um, so, I mean, obviously Bob will be heading in to do his normal signing, but that just might be something that you'll all want to coordinate with Deb to figure out a time to be able to get down to the town hall to add your signatures or if there's an alternate way, you've been signing things with her.
I think that if they need any more than one signature from Bob, they'll, it's the, the minutes of the meeting should suffice.
Oh, and Bob is the designated signature as well, so.
So, I'll say we just sign it, let Bob sign it and
Okey-doke.
Go from there. See if they, if they're satisfied. I mean, I, it's, it's events that have never occurred before, so I can't see why there should be any problem.
Sure, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I think that's all from the assessor's office. Just have to finish typing one thing before the town clerk's memo. Okay. So are you ready for me to move on to town clerk?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is Kristen again, and this is the memo from the town clerk. Uh, liquor license renewal application for the barn restaurant and tavern, which needs to be signed by all of you. There are three parts of the application that need all of your signatures on all three, first class, third class and outside consumption. You could all let me know how you would like to procure the signatures. For Bob, I will have it on the select board meeting table for you to sign tomorrow and I will have all the signature pages on top for you. So regarding that, if everybody could just check in with Deb and just figure out what would work best. And I'm sure there might be a way to do it electronically, perhaps. Um, for Bob Jones, two fleet permits that need to be signed on the select board table at the town hall. We are still adhering strictly to the safety protocol that we enforced upon the modified opening of the town hall. Masks are required for anyone who enters the building. Have a wonderful day. Stay home, stay safe and stay, stay healthy. Respectfully submitted, Deb.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure there must be some way that, that Bob's signature should, should do the job for.
Yeah. I can, so, um, I can check in and see because that motion that was made was that Bob's signature would, he would be designated to represent the board in his, in signing. Um, so we can look further into that, Mike. That's a good point.
Okay. Let's make a motion to, I mean, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the alcohol permit for the barn restaurant?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
John will second it.
John will second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Ed? Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, pass. And then you'll see if that's good enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now that it's a roll call vote, I have to type all your names out every time. My little fingers can't move fast enough. All right.
Kristen, this is Keith.
Hi.
Um, I think on that liquor license, there is, uh, usually there's two rows of signatures. You can sign either for or opposed. And if you have a, just did a roll call vote with each person's name agreeing to it, probably the one signature would be sufficient.
Okay, do you think, do you think that motion?
Usually on, on the liquor licenses, usually there's two rows of signatures. You can vote to approve it or to disprove it. Depending on which side you sign on. So by doing a roll call vote, I think you have that covered.
Great. I will, thank you, Keith. I will send that to Deb. The, I'll make sure to copy the motion with the roll call vote in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions on the clerk's memo? So the treasurer's memo is next from Julie. Um, there are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was 863198. The total accounts payable was 1750963. Monies from the general fund, 148366. Highway, 791461. Wastewater, 376439 and landfill was 37895 in parentheses, gates. I have an invoice for flags that was emailed to you last week. May I have permission to proceed with the order? Um, we will need to act soon on propane contracts. I have forwarded quotes from Blue Flame as well as Suburban. Let me know if you need them sent again. Banking, I have a quote for checks from a new company out of Maine. It only saves about $68. We usually order from a company in Vermont. I think I should order from the Vermont company. It's a small bit of extra money and we are familiar with them and have history. Thoughts? Question mark? Uh, banking, I am ready now to order checks. The timing should allow us to make the switch to single signing right after the new fiscal year begins. I have been sent the link to pay the wastewater permit for $200 on June 30th, 2020, which can be paid online via credit card. Old business, if any departments are ordering supplies that are specific to COVID safety guidelines, I need to know in order to track our COVID-specific expenses. I have another Zoom meeting this afternoon. I may be late or unable to attend. Have a great meeting. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. So the first, um, item I suppose would be, first item is the warrants. Um, and then she had some other questions I can revisit for you, in case you didn't absorb all of that immediately. Um, so the invoice for flags that was sent out, does she have permission to proceed?
I, I mean, that, that's something that we've already, always done and stuff and I think the fire department's been taking care of it and I think it's something we just go ahead and.
Yeah, so the fire departments are in charge of putting them up and taking them down and the town is responsible for purchasing them and at the end of last season, the fire department reported to us that many of them needed replacing. They were looking a little sad and tired, so. Um, if someone makes, wants to make a motion.
We all in favor of that?
Yes, Ed, yes. If you need a motion, I would make that motion.
Thank you, Ed.
We have a second on that motion?
I'll second, John will second that. I do wonder about, um, the policy of leaving them up year-round, or is there a time when they're taken down to try to reduce the cost a little bit?
John, this is Kristen. I delete, I mean, there, if, there's one hung rate around our house and it's always taken down in the winter.
I, okay. I thought they took them down in the winter, in the fall.
Yeah, they take down end of fall and they put them up kind of once, once we all hope when winter is done. There's usually one more storm that hits them in the end of the spring there, but. But yeah, they do get taken down for.
Okay, thank you.
Mike's got company.
All in favor? Ed?
Oh, yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the flag purchases?
Okay. Um, the next, so propane contracts, did everybody get that, those emails?
Right. Looks like Suburban's more reasonable. Does anybody have any other companies they think is, is worth checking out or anybody want to do any fishing for us?
Don't all jump that one. Um.
I don't know what other big, what other big, uh, propane dealers are around here anyways that are, seem to have a good reputation over on your side.
I don't know.
Any of you guys use propane?
Ed, I do a little bit. Um, right now, I, full disclosure, right now I am using Suburban, but I shop around.
Yeah.
Suburban is the best, has been the best price lately.
Okay. What about Door? Door seems to be a pretty good player these days.
Yes, they're, they're also pushing their, uh, propane.
Maybe we could ask Julie. Did Julie get the propane from Suburban? The quote from Suburban?
She sent, yeah, from Suburban and Blue Flame. I can ask her if she can resend everything and mention that you might be interested in seeing what Door has to offer.
Yeah, I mean, we, you don't need to resend it right now, but if she could, she could see if Door, that's about the only other real major player over in that area.
Mike, this is Harry. We use Irving.
You use Suburban?
Uh, Irving.
Irving, okay.
Irving, yeah, they, they provide our propane.
Okay, so there's a couple other op, there's two other options if, if Julie would have time to, to check with them. She has the numbers of what, what we use at the different places, so.
I will.
It does seem like propane, uh, Blue Flame is quite high compared to Suburban.
Okay. Okay, um, checks, quote for ordering more checks, the company out of Maine would save about $68, but the treasurer's report expresses a desire to stick with the company we've been working with for years, um, because perhaps the history is more valuable than the $68. Anybody have thoughts on that?
The history with the company is more important than the $68 to me. I don't know what the rest of you guys think.
Just add, I agree with Mike.
Okay, um.
Okay. So can we just, just a, yeah, let's just do a motion to, to buy them that way. It's, it seems like it's easy as if we just, just do a motion each time.
Yeah, I agree. So the motion.
Ed made it.
Ed?
I'll second. This is Bob. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Ed?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think we have to approve the warrants too.
Yes, yep.
Right, that's what we didn't.
There's, I, I have that one. I have that on my, I won't let you get away without it. Um, uh, Julie has been sent the link to pay the wastewater permit for $200, which is due on the 30th of June, can be paid online via a credit card.
That, that's just kind of a given, it seems.
Okay.
I don't think, I think she just needs to pay that one. I don't really see any, any real discussion about that, if anybody has any questions or anything, but.
Okay. And that's within the spending
Right.
limit as well. Um, okay, and the mo, and the warrants is the last item of business.
I'll make the motion to accept the warrants.
We have a second?
Just add, I'll second it.
Is there any discussion about the warrants? Okay, all in favor? Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, that's it. Nice work.
Okay.
Uh, then we've got, we're on through emergency management and health officer, which.
He skipped on.
We've already done. Um, and then last up is the wastewater treatment facility for reports.
The wastewater treatment facility reports. I talked to those people on the corner of Euclid Street and explained to them that the fact that their cleanouts were not properly installed in their basement was, was their problem and it wouldn't have been a problem if, even though the sewer backed up, it wouldn't have got into their basements because their cleanouts were defectively installed. So they weren't happy, but they didn't throw anything at me when I left, so.
Oh, this is Ed. You know, Mike, was that a new purchase, that house?
Yes.
Would their home inspector be, is it, would that be something that perhaps he should have?
That's what I told a guy.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that, those weren't installed properly. Well, my home inspector, I said, that's the guy I'd be talking to about it.
That's, that's what he gets paid for.
Exactly. Because looking at how the sewer goes out through there, it wasn't like the sewer line went back up into their house. It's like their, their sewer couldn't get out, so it just kept building back up into their house. Cause their house is a lot higher than a lot of the other houses down there. So. But anyways, um, tomorrow, uh, the engineer, um, Jenny Oster is going to come down and look the site over at noon, if anybody's interested in, in meeting her and seeing what, what's going on. She has, she doesn't have the, the report isn't done yet, but she has to look the site over and see how everything would work out and stuff. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna run down there at lunchtime tomorrow to meet her and, and then, but if anybody else is interested in coming over and seeing what she has to say, welcome at noon tomorrow, so. And other than that, I haven't heard anything else from the sewer treatment plant.
Okay.
So,
Um.
moving right along, I guess.
So older unfinished business. This is Kristen and I just had one or two things. Um, the first was I got the, the gentleman Hugo from Alon City who does the radar speed control signs. He reached back out to me just to say, hey, I'm still here and, you know, your quote still stands, are you interested? And I did let him know that it's something that we would be talking about in the next fiscal year. Um, so just letting you all know that I've maintained contact with him and I'm still waiting to see if um, those grants are a viable option. I checked in with Jonas and unfortunately, it seems like there's really not much happening by way of the original grant that had been suggested, but I'm going to look more into this Better Places proposal that I mentioned earlier and see if there's any way that that might be able to fit in somehow. Um, so just keeping you updated on that. Um, and then regarding Elizabeth Gibson's, um, impending position opening, I forwarded you all an email today that came from her that just kind of talked a little bit more about what her roles are. Um, and she also Um, and she also expressed and relayed, um, some potential people who she thought might be able to take over what she does. Um, including even somebody like in Rupert who man, who manages the Rupert Town website. And it's a very similar, uh, position. So they had even said they might be able to take over both towns. And then one other thought I had on that is that Sarah Young, our community connector at the Polat Library. I wasn't sure if that might be something worth investigating due to the fact that, in my opinion, the website and the eBlast is a nice way to connect, keep everyone connected and informed. So that was a thought that I had.
Okay, those are good ideas. Um.
This is Ed. At the last meeting, we touched on combining positions to make one attractive package. Has there been any more thought or discussion on that as to the number of, there's a number, I believe, right now of positions open? If, you know, we should get a list together or whatever of what they all are and perhaps somebody, it would make somebody a nice full-time job.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Especially we have four basically part-time people in town now that might, you know, it might be something they might like to look at.
Yeah.
Certainly advertise it, but it's.
Yeah, I, Ed, that's a real, I had a similar thought and I hadn't forgotten about that too. And I just wonder, something that I can look into is back in my HR days, like there were certain legalities regarding the miss, like it being necessary to advertise for a position um, before just hiring to fill it, but I'm not sure, you know. I, I'll have to look more into it, but I agree that I think it could, the responsibilities, and Elizabeth said this too in her message, they seem like responsibilities that could be nicely wrapped up into some existing positions that are already happening in town. So that's, you know, something, it would just be a matter of figuring out if people are interested in taking that on. But it's good, she's working on, you know, getting a more concrete job description. So, you know, someone like me, for example, could see, okay, you know, is this something that I would feel confident in being able to do?
Exactly, that's my, it's, it's difficult enough to find one person, say nothing about five or six part-time.
Yes.
Here a couple hours there, but.
Right, and I feel like especially, you know, for cer, for certain positions too, right now, it's like there might be more of an appetite to do more. Because like I know at the library, for example, their whole not being open to the public yet, I'm sure all those demands have completely shifted. So, um, more to be, to be continued, this conversation, but, you know, just, those are some updates on that.
Okay, sounds like a great idea.
Um.
So that's, that's it for older unfinished business?
Uh, this is Chuck. I looked at the warrants to see if we had gotten a bill from Hubbard's and seeing none, I called them. And they asked if my ears were ringing and I said, no, not really, because I've lost a hearing aid. So anyhow, they're, uh, supposedly gonna mail us a bill and we should have it for the last, I've been looking at, what do we have, a meeting on the 30th?
Yeah, probably.
Think so.
Right.
So it should be in, in the town's hands, so we can, uh, we should see it in the warrants on the 30th.
Well, if they forgot to send one, that's not our problem, but anyhow, that's.
Well, I was a little surprised that they couldn't give me, uh, seems how our name just came up. Why they didn't have an amount to give me, but she said they didn't. So get ready for a shock, I guess.
Had to be done, so. Okay, anything else on older unfinished business? What about new business?
Um, this is Kristen, and new business, we, and I believe Tom Collard might be here if I'm recognizing his number correctly. But Tom submitted an email to the Select Board this afternoon or today, which I forwarded along to all of you. Um, Tom, is that you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you, did you want to speak to the, your email or would you like me to give an overview? This is Kristen.
No, you can go ahead and give an overview, right?
Okay, um, so did everybody see the email?
I did not.
Okay. Um, let me go back. So, uh, the message reads that, Select Board of Polat, I have had the opportunity to serve on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission plus the Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Council for the past year as second local representative for the Town of Polat and believe that Eric Mack is looking to step down from both of these as the Town of Polat local primary representative this month. If this is correct, would it be possible for the Select Board to appoint me to become the local primary representative for both of these positions? If the Select Board feels I would make a good fit and approves this request, could the board also notify the Rutland Regional Planning Office with an update to both the RRPC and the RRTAC? Thank you for your time and consideration and considering me for these positions, Thomas Collard, West Polat.
Okay, that sounds like we need to put that in the form of a motion. What does everyone think?
I like it. This Ed, I would make that motion.
Okay, Ed makes that motion that Tom get nominated to the number one spot of those two boards. Anybody want to second the motion?
I will second it. This is Chuck.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Tom.
And I will go ahead and reach out. There is a form that is, that we all filled out and Tom, I'm sure you remember filling out too. So I will reach out to the, the over, the pe, the original people who I've submitted it to and see if we can just make the, the adjustment internally. And if there is a form required, I'll let everybody know at the next meeting.
Okay, excellent. And moving on to.
Um, there was also in new business, a message that came from Frank. Um, Frank, would you like to speak to your message or would you like for me to read yours? This is Kristen. I'll go ahead and read it. Um, to the Polat Select Board.
You can go ahead and read it.
Oh. Yeah, yes, Frank?
Go ahead, you can go ahead and read it.
Okay, um, Polat Select Board, Eric told me the other day that his retirement from the PPC took effect in March and his end date of the RR, Rutland Regional Planning Group is June. I'm interested in helping out the town by putting my name up for filling that vacancy or being appointed in the short term as an interim Polat Planning Commission member. Uh, for however long I might be needed, but could be long-term also. I know where the PPC is in their process and would not have to get up to speed due to years of attending their meetings. See you all at 7:00 PM tonight via Zoom. Respectfully submitted Frank Nelson.
Okay, normally in the past, we put that.
I'm not looking to go to the. I'm not looking to fill the position and go to Rutland, but just.
The local ones?
Uh, vacancy on the Planning Commission.
Okay. Normally we put that out and we not, we advertise that position. And so we can add you to the list. Um, can we get that out on the eBlast or something that, Kristen, do you think?
Um, yeah, is, Harry, did you, this is Kristen, and if I may address a question to Harry, was that something we were planning on putting together?
Uh, yeah, it's one of the things that I was going to be discussing at the, uh, at our next meeting on the 22nd. Uh, to fill that position.
Okay.
Uh, we, I mean, we're a seven-member, seven-member board. Um, and we do have six, uh, members and a, and a, um, an alternate. So we're, we have it covered in case we need a quorum, but, uh, I think I'd like to have another, uh, fill that permanent position. It's, uh, it's in the bylaws that way, so I think we should fill it.
Okay. So normally we put out a, we put out a, an ad offering, you know, having anyone interested in that position, contact us.
Yeah, we did that before Tom.
Right.
Was appointed as well.
So we should, we should do that again and, and then go from there. Frank, Frank has his name in and then we'll, we'll see who else is interested and then we could choose from them. Okay?
Okay.
And that is all that I have for new business. And public comment is the next order.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question, Mike. Um, I guess I'll address it to Bob. I went to, uh, Granville late this afternoon and you know why, Mike. But, uh, as I turned on to, uh, well, just past the Yulet Farm, I made the left-hand turn and I see that there's a road sign that's slightly ajar. I wonder if Keith saw that. Uh, I don't know if that happened by help of the farmers that were mowing hay there today or, uh, or what the status is. But the road sign is almost out and the road right away.
Well, I was gonna stop and try to fix it, but I was in a hurry, Chuck. I will try to prop it up tomorrow. But I have a feeling that, uh, possibly Dave Hosley might have bumped it with the, uh, side mower. He was mowing the roadsides there today, but either way, uh, I'll try to fix it if I can get to it before Keith and the road crew do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the public comment?
Mike, I'd just like to ask a question about the, uh, the Zoom meetings that we've been having.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, from, uh, from the seminar, uh, the webinar that I attended, uh, regarding open plan meeting, uh, or open meetings. The, uh, it, uh, the webinar, the webinar concentrated on open meeting compliance amid the COVID-19 pandemic. And, uh, with particular discussion around Act, uh, 92, which was an act that, uh, uh, to cover, uh, compliance during this time. That act was supposed to have expired as of yesterday. Does anybody know about any extensions to Act 92?
Now, as far as I know, Governor Scott kept, uh, kept it going longer.
Yeah, this was specific, uh, to open me, open meetings, but, uh, I haven't.
If I.
I haven't looked into it to find out.
Mike, um, this is.
Go ahead.
This is Kristen. I, Harry had the same question and my understanding was that these acts that were put into place are effective so long as we are in a state of emergency. They established by our governor. So if Governor Scott extended the state of emergency, I, my understanding is that all of the rules continue to apply. But, um, I've also been in touch with Susan Sanning over the last couple of years for several issues. So I would be happy to reach out to her via email, see if we can get some guidance.
Okay, yeah, that's one thing I forgot to ask her when I spoke to her the other day.
Yeah.
Because, because I, I did take, I did note that, uh, it did expire as of yesterday, but, uh, I had spoken to her last week and had thought about it until just now.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that they did indicate in the webinar was that, you know, now that we have this electronic format for attending meetings, uh, they recommend that you, uh, continue, everybody continues to make that accessible electronically. And I would like to certainly do that for the, uh, Planning Commission. Try to get, just to try to get a little bit more activity from the public that may not want to attend in bad weather or in, uh, in winter weather. Any thoughts?
Sounds like a good, good idea. I wonder what we'd have to do to set up the town hall to do that on and, you know, we'd, we'd need some camera or something like that to, and a screen to go in the town hall, right?
Yeah, yeah, we had talked about a screen for that, for making presentations, uh, probably about two years ago. And maybe it's time we should, uh, take another look at that.
This is.
Kristen, go ahead.
My only concern, oh, sorry, Frank, um, my only concern is that this find, figuring out a way if we are, if we, when we reach a point where we're physically back in the town hall, then to be able to figure out a way to appropriately have everybody on camera and microphoned so that they can all be heard by the people who might tune in electronically. I just think it might take some coordinating. But I agree that it would be a really nice opportunity to make accessibility.
I don't know, I don't know how many people you, uh, do meetings by conference call, but, uh, um, I've done a lot of those in the past and we've had some fairly large meetings where we've had one screen which has, you know, a camera on the top of it. And that's all we needed, you know, for everybody to be seen and to be, uh, part of the discussion.
Cool.
Frank.
Okay.
Go ahead, Frank.
To, the discussion was, in the past, was to, to get a, uh, big screen TV type of thing for presentations in lieu of, of a projector with a slideshow.
You're right.
Which has been discussed a number of times. And this device could double, uh, if purchased correctly with a camera built in to this. So it could turn into a, essentially a user with public at large and the camera would cover everybody. And, and it would have to be similar to the pre-town meeting where Thrasher, uh, passes around a microphone for anybody to talk. And anybody who would be from the public involved in the meeting would be able to, uh, utilize that microphone to get the audio on. And, and if there were a member of the commission, uh, either the Select Board or a commission, for example, going forward, who, uh, would be unable to attend a meeting physically, then they could still attend a meeting wherever they are in the country or the world. Uh, traveling or something to be able to attend, participate in a Select Board meeting or a Planning Commission meeting, uh, remotely. And I think that's a wonderful idea that, that, and Harry speaking to this and Kristen, and it's, and it wouldn't cost much to develop that, to, uh, actually make it work.
Yeah, as Frank knows, uh, because he attends our Planning Commission meetings, um, when I'm away, uh, I, at least, at least I was able to do it when Eric was around. Because we both had iPads and I attended by iPad. And it worked out very well. So if we had a large screen with a proper microphone and camera, it would be even better.
That certainly seems like a reasonable idea.
I think. Yeah. Yeah, and it would, it would make it an official, standardized process so that anybody could do it, no matter what device they have.
Okay, we'll have to put that on and see if there's any money, money in the budget or anything like that left to, uh, to allow us to purchase such a, such a thing, uh, screen and appropriate hardware to do that. We'll have to probably talk to the IT guy and see, we need someone to set it up for us.
Am I able to? Excuse me, this is Frank again. Am I able to talk to Julie and get this onto the? Excuse me, this is Frank again. Might be able to talk to Julie and get this onto the COVID reimbursement where the town may not have to pay for it, where we could draw it out of COVID funds somehow, if we did it sooner rather than later.
Interesting idea.
I guess that's a possibility.
Hearing no other comments, I'd make a motion that we would adjourn and Mike, I'd wish that you would give me a call when you're.
I'll call you soon as the meeting's over, Chuck.
Thank you.
We haven't had the public participation part yet.
That was it.
It was.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, I have nothing else to add then.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. Ed, you want to second that?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming.